To the September 12, 2022, to Walton Work Session. First item on our agenda tonight is Climate Action Plan Update. We're led by Matty Cheek and Nick, welcome.
Mayor Council, see you all in person. This is nice.
I know, isn't it?
Hi. Nick Westendorf, Deputy Public Works Director. I'm joined by Matty Cheek, our management analyst, and Josh Proudfoot, our consultant on the project. They're going to do the bulk of the presentation, so I'll hand it off to Matty.
All right, thanks, Nick. Hi, everyone. Great to be here and see you all in person. It's my first time in person, so it's exciting. Oh, okay. A little quiet. Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. So here today to provide an update on our greenhouse gas emissions inventory report as we recently wrapped that up. Before we dive into that, though, I'll share a little bit about community engagement. Next slide, please. Oh, is it? Sorry.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, so our presentation will include our community and stakeholder engagement update as well as our greenhouse gas emissions inventory report. That'll include a emissions forecast based on current policies that are in place. And then we'll talk through some best practices for emissions reductions based on our report. Then we'll talk a little bit about next steps and move on for discussion. All righty, so we just wrapped up Phase One of our community engagement for this project. The Phase One really focused on building awareness and understanding of what a climate action plan is, how climate change works, how it'll impact Tuolotin. And we gathered feedback at a variety of community events this summer. So you can see up there, Viva Tuolotin, as well as a bunch of parks, concerts, and the Latino Business Network meeting, Tuolotinos, et cetera. And so got to talk to a lot of folks, which was really exciting. We asked two key questions during our outreach push for Phase One. First was, what concerns you most about climate change in Tuolotin? And second was, what do you want to learn more about? And our hope is that answers to both of those two questions inform future efforts and actions and strategies in the final plan. So I wanted to highlight a few of the top things that we heard after this whole outreach push this summer. In terms of concerns, we heard a ton about extreme weather, and I would say at least 50% of that was about extreme heat specifically. We also heard a lot about protecting the ecosystem and river, drought and water availability in Tuolotin, and wildfires and smoke. And then in terms of things folks really wanted to learn more about, we heard a lot about what has the most impact and what can I do, as well as EVs and EV charging, impacts to plants, animals, and trees. I think the plants and animals one was the most surprising to us. And then, community building and working together to make changes, as well as renewable energy. So folks are definitely intrigued by this topic and have a lot of ideas, which was really exciting to see. Next, I want to talk a little bit about our stakeholder engagement. And this is a little bit different in that it's a little bit more targeted than the general community engagement. It's talking to folks who either make policies or have a lot of money or, you know, bigger impacts on the community than individuals. So we had our first round of stakeholder workshops in June, and those were focused on adaptation or learning to live with climate change. One second here. At those meetings, we had city departments, folks from government agencies like ODOT, nonprofits, and folks from the private sector, including Campbell's and the Chamber of Commerce. And some of the key themes from those meetings included building trust and relationships, both between the city and marginalized communities, between the city and the business community, and then also just between agencies that are all kind of working on similar issues, but not necessarily always working together. We also heard that there's additional need for public refuge. When there is a ton of heat or smoke or flooding, folks are worried about having enough places to go so they can stay safe and comfortable. Third, we heard a lot about transit lacking here and folks just having a hard time getting around. And also, a few major employers' schedules, like Campbell's, kind of prohibit them from using the existing transit that is here because they work really, really early in the morning and they can't get here. Lastly, we heard that the right-of-way will be increasingly crowded as we need more stormwater infrastructure to handle increased flooding, as we need higher electrical needs, et cetera. We'll have to put more stuff in the ground, and it's already kind of crowded there. So that's what we heard. And, all right. And then next up, we'll have our mitigation-themed stakeholder workshops this fall. Those will all be taking place in October. And it'll be one workshop per topic listed up there. So we'll have one on buildings and energy, one on urban form and land use, one on transportation, and another on consumption. So TBD on what we hear from those, but we'll report back. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Josh to share the results of our greenhouse gas emissions inventory. And Josh, just let me know when you want me to go to the next slide.
I'm ready. Can everybody hear me okay?
Definitely.
I assume that was kind of loud, so. Your whole image is about as big as that to me. So I'll just, I won't be reading faces, I'll read the laughter. All right, so here's fun stuff that'll make everybody laugh. A recent reminder of how does climate change work and why is it happening? It's the greenhouse effect where our atmosphere, with more greenhouse gases, holds more heat in. And then the earth warms. And then on the right, if you look at this graphic for the last 800,000 years, you'll see that concentrations of carbon dioxide have varied a lot over that timeframe and correlated with different temperature regimes. But in that range, which seems to vary about every 300,000 years, there's a dramatic deviation from that, and that's our recent experience since 1870. So what we're trying to do is get back into that natural cycle and not be so far above it. Okay, next slide, please. All right, so what are the big takeaways for the greenhouse gas inventory? And we're going to talk about this in a couple of different ways. But first, the community's emissions are about 677,000 metric tons. That is scaled pretty much like the other communities of your size in Oregon that we've seen. There's some variation depending on utilities and what kinds of power generation they have. Of that total, the local emissions is about 14 metric tons of greenhouse gases per resident. And local emissions means the emissions from combustion here, the emissions from chemical processes here, inside of Tuolotin. The US average is slightly higher. What that doesn't include is imported emissions. If we show imported emissions in the US average, we're closer to about 25 metric tons per person. But the global average is for imported and local emissions for everybody. So the takeaway is even local emissions for Tuolotin is about three times more per person. But if you include imported stuff, food we eat that's not grown around here or goods that are made outside of Tuolotin, then you realize we're close to four to five times the global average. Side note, the per capita Chinese GHGs are still below five, even with all the rapid growth that they have and the power that they have. The imported emissions, again, are in the goods and food that we bring into the community. Next slide, please. Okay, so local emission sources on the left. Those are the ones that we all think of where we'd either see a smokestack or a tailpipe in our community or the electricity that's generated somehow, someplace, and brought into the community. You'll notice the building energy is very tall, in part because that's where we have a lot of commercial and industrial energy use or electricity use. NPGE is more carbon or emissions intense than the Bonneville system that serves most of the public utility districts and electric boards in our state and around the Pacific Northwest. Transportation energy is another big part of it. That is just the fuel inside, sold inside of Tuolotin. It does not include the upstream emissions of fuel production, which is off to the right. Waste disposal, notice that's tiny. I want to just take a moment here to talk about this. When people think about bad environmental stuff, they usually think about trash and they think about packaging. And just wanted to point out that that is a tiny, tiny, tiny piece of the story. Almost all of the story comes before you throw it out, when you use it, when you're using energy, when you're burning fuels, or when you're making stuff. Imported emissions sources, goods and food. You'll see goods is slightly more than food. And air travel, we also have tucked in there because that's so confusing for everybody that it's nearly always something outside of the city limits. What this shows us is mostly what we've seen in other communities, which is roughly half, I'd say more like 40% in your community, of the emissions are imported and the other are local. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so if we divided this into three piles, residential, commercial, and industrial, this is what it'd look like. And commercial is the strongest and the largest. Notice that the gas is the green bar. The gas data is a little bit better here between industrial and commercial than the electrical data. The electrical data is a little harder to decouple. We think actually, after looking at it multiple times, that we could pull another maybe 20,000 metric tons out of the commercial bar and into the industrial bar. And what we've done is looked up the power contracts for a few of the very large industrials, and we've looked at the air permitting data. And we've talked to the utilities to see the best data they have. But I think that commercial bar is going to shrink about one tick, and that's going to go over to the industrial bar. But mostly, the story here is electricity with some gas. And you'll see that most of that is in the business sector. Okay. Next slide, please. Okay, transportation emissions. Because it's a little confusing with air travel, we thought we'd include it in one pie chart with it and the other pie chart without it. You can see it's a sizable portion of total, excuse me, total emissions per person. This is an estimate based on income levels, number of people at what income levels from census data. It is also based on Oregon's consumption-based inventory, where there's real numbers for Oregon for all these categories. And we downscale it based on the number of people and the kind of income level of the household. Next slide, please. Okay, so some things that are unique that may not be obvious. Refrigerant use and industrial process emissions. So industrial process emissions are usually chemical reactions where you have some kind of gassing off of some byproduct or primary product, and that becomes the emission, and there's no combustion involved. And that we get from DEQ's data. Refrigerant use is an estimated and scaled-down one from not only national data, but also state-level data. And then that's attributed to population. But the place that we see refrigerants leaking at scale that add up to this larger quantity here typically is in grocery stores and commercial settings. The very largest of the large cooling rooms for industrial facilities or for food processing tend to use very low-intensity refrigerants. They may be hazardous, like ammonia, but they are not as intense on the atmosphere like some of the other ones that can be up to 24,000 times what CO2 is. All right, next slide, please. So here's another look at some more detail of the imported emissions. And if you look at goods, you see how much of goods is just the stuff of daily life. I've always been annoyed by other goods, but I think we know that when we go shopping and look around our house, not everything fits in these categories. But it's also curious to note that that construction is attributed in any one year across all units to everybody. So we know that construction is a big deal. And when it's long in your past, it's less of a deal for you, but for a community it lives on. For food and beverages, you could slice this a million different ways. Short version is eat more plants. The more plants we eat, the less meat we eat. But really, when you look at meat, it's the cow. So it's dairy and beef. And then when you look at dairy and beef, there's a huge range between pasture-raised and corn-fed. So there are so many things going on in there. I think the most important thing to know, though, is that about 40% of all US food is wasted. And in Oregon, we find that about 45% of all food that's wasted is wasted at our own homes. So between eating more plants and planning to avoid food waste is the big deal there. With goods, it's fix-it. And then these upstream fuel production. This just shows you the shadow of what we know of as the energy use in a community or the gas combustion in our community. It's all the upstream things for making that fuel or making that electricity and bringing it to the community. And that's a substantial bar as well. And then you see air travel. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so a forecast. What is a forecast? Well, this is our very first optimistic, business-as-usual, existing policy forecast. So business-as-usual sounds rude. It is actually a term of art in the climate scaling world. What it means is if we make no changes and it's just the laws unfolding that we already have on the books and the things we know about, how's it going to go? So we have population going off in the dotted red line. And the assumption is if we had the same level of consumption and the energy types weren't going to change and everything was the same, then those emissions would be going off to the right, and it would look really scary. And that's what we've been doing in every single community until Tuolotin. What has changed is the Climate Protection Program through DEQ. And that building energy wedge, that blue wedge, is coming down dramatically because of that new law. Now, there are other laws that are coming soon that aren't here, like that green wedge that would affect that. I don't know if you read recently, but California passed a law saying no combustion-based cars will be allowed to be sold in California after 2035. So that would change this green wedge quite a bit. And Oregon is mid-process on a rule for that and a rule for trucks. The other thing that's kind of hidden here is even if we had no decarbonization of fuels, but we said every vehicle will eventually be electric, and we know electricity is tracking towards zero because by 2040, everything is supposed to, every new generation is supposed to be renewable, then we'd know that the vehicles would be ever cleaner. Now, that yellow dotted line is the Paris Accord goals and the worldwide hope that we can get to zero by 2050. The Oregon goals are a little less ambitious. So this wedge graph probably shows us meeting the Oregon goal but being short of the Paris goal. And then you see that the refrigerants and industrial process do not taper, although we are seeing, we've got an international policy that should be rolling out on refrigerants, but it's a little delayed at the federal level. In California, every supermarket is reporting on refrigerant use every year as a pre-regulatory warm-up. Okay, so that is our first happy-ish forecast. I'm pleased to say that the Climate Protection Program is a big deal for all the communities in Oregon. Next slide, please. Okay, so two big ones that I'm sure you've heard of, the Inflation Reduction Act and the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking. Two thoughts on this. One is the Inflation Reduction Act is curious in the sense that it has been scaled by Princeton, but it's not scaled based on law. It's scaled based on these tax credits are likely to be used because they're so lucrative. So what does that imply if they're used? Which is that there'll be substantial reduction in grid energy. There'll be substantial increases in heat pumps, in renewable energy production, in transmission, and in EV and battery infrastructure. So while we can't scale that for Tuolotin today, I think down the road, we would be able to. But right now, that information isn't quite as clear. On the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking, I don't know exactly how this is going to affect emissions, but there are a couple of things going on here. One is, sorry, parking. The other one is alt modes. The other one is housing density. And quick things to say on it. The denser the housing, the more units, the more likely they are to be electric and more efficient. Not to say that they're perfect or there's nothing to do there, but compared to a single-family dwelling, they're much lower energy use and square footage, and they tend to be built electric when they're large. The transition to all-electric vehicles will swallow the efficiencies of alt modes. Not to say we want to kick out alt modes or active modes. We want those because those create healthy and livable communities. But the emissions from that is going to change over time. The other thing is that we're just learning about this. And I know you're considering a lot about this, but we're not experts on this topic. We are trying to learn as fast as we can. All right, next slide. Okay, so best practices. These are the best practices in every community. And the reason that we share these is to frame the discussion upfront of what is it that we're going to do in Tuolotin to do the known good things that will make us decarbonize and prepare for tomorrow faster. Okay, next slide. So for transportation, biggest effect is going to be personal vehicles going electric. The barriers, the things that we can work on are getting charging into workplace environments, all-day workplace environments, and dense housing. So multifamily housing, we want to make sure that there's charging there so that that's not forever a barrier the way recycling is. For diesel operators, the laws on the West Coast are following the same pattern as with the cars. Eventually, the vehicles will be mandated to be zero emission. But during this transition, having better diesel fuel, bio or renewable diesel, will make a big difference. Reducing air travel or buying carbon offsets with your flight makes a big difference. Electronic commute is a huge change. Now, that's only for people that are professionals. That doesn't work for people that have to be a place, do stuff, fix stuff with stuff. So electronic commute is here. Four-day work weeks are the equivalent for people that touch the stuff that makes life go. Transit, first and last mile. My guess is Tuolotin doesn't have every single street as a major thoroughfare, an entire, sorry, a high-capacity corridor. So that first-last-mile coordination or problem is a local challenge and is one of the places where Tuolotin will make a big difference. And that includes active transportation, walking and biking. So as Tuolotin develops, these are the kinds of things we want to have. But also, we're trying to get folks to make the switch when they're ready and when they can afford to do so. Next slide. Urban form and land use. So this is what that DLCD policy covers specifically. But there's some good things in here that we know that are goals, generally speaking, when a city is growing up and can't grow out. One is urban nodes or 20-minute neighborhoods, those places where you can walk, bike, scooter, you know, maybe get an electric scooter, some version of that, to get to your basic needs of daily life. It's not going to the regional hospital. It's more like, can I go pick up my cleaner and go to the bank and get food all in, you know, a small trip? Transit oriented development is when you're in greenfields that you're thinking exactly about how people go from one place to another, and you design that new neighborhood with that transit in mind. Building taller, retrofitting communities, sometimes where you're going into the edge of single-family and you're putting in four units now. Wherever it is, more dense and more transportation routes for active transportation. The city ordinance is to encourage these things. There's a million places that could show up. A lot of folks view this city ordinances and rental code as one of the big places to make change. There's a lot of leverage there. But there's also a lot of learning and incentives and transitions we have to mind. Next slide, please. Okay, buildings and energy. So first thing to do, if it's possible, would be to switch to renewable energy in advance of the mandate. So if the community could acquire on behalf of the community renewables, that would be fantastic. And that's something that we will be starting to figure out with your utility. With gas, it's going to be a while. With gas, it's going to be a while before that gas becomes biogas. So subscribing to smart energy or the offset gas is a great place to start, either as a whole community with an opt-out or, you know, household by household, business by business. Electrifying buildings and appliances where possible. There are some thermal loads or big heavy heating situations that it probably is forcing it to bring an electrical system on prematurely. And I'd say be careful with those. We've noticed that at least locally in Eugene with the lumber mills and a lot of the food businesses. But when it comes to just places that need hot water and air heating, which is the vast majority of square footage in most towns, there's an answer off the shelf, ready today. It may take a little while next time you're replacing some of those to retrofit it, but that technology is ready today. Energy efficiency audits are great to let you know where you're going. The efficiency is the second order of business. It's always a good idea. But if you're in a hurry, and we are, we want to switch the fuel source first and then get efficient second. But weatherization is good for everybody in all circumstances. Refrigerants, we're going to have to learn how to avoid leaks and new refrigerants to replace with. Rooftop solar is a good idea when you can afford it. Pacific core cities have a better shot at this just because their incentives are richer, because they're farther behind the eight ball on delivering renewable power. And then shade trees. Shade trees are important when you can take the heat off in the summer, but you want a deciduous tree that can give you the sunshine in the winter when you do want it. While everybody thinks about trees sequestering carbon in urban areas, their better effect is keeping the area cool so we don't turn on air conditioners. Okay, next slide. Consumption, food and goods. When you can borrow or share, you do. But when you can't, you'd want to buy used or durable. I think everybody knows this hierarchy. Fixing it is something that's ever more important. And just like there are storefront matching grants for retail, we're starting to hear about storefront grants or grants to support repair businesses. Meal planning, eat more plants, buy recycled and then recycle. And notice recycle is at the very end because it has the least ability to influence greenhouse gas emissions or climate change compared to the list above it. Next slide.
All right, I think that's me, Josh. Okay, cool. All right, so now that we've both heard from the community a little bit and also know what our major greenhouse gas emission sources are, we're moving on to phase two of community engagement for this project to gather feedback on draft strategies and actions from folks to figure out what barriers might exist, what folks are interested in or already know about, et cetera. And so the way we'll do this is a few key tools. We've got an online open house that will open up on September 24th and be open through October 28th. That'll have a few different stations in it. So the first one will be what is a climate action plan? How the climate will change in Tuolumne? How you can help? And then an interactive map that you can see a screenshot of there. With the map, it's geared towards adaptation. So folks can go in there and place on the map places that they've experienced, you know, extreme weather or flooding, et cetera, to help us gain a better idea of situationally, like what people are experiencing here. And then lastly, we'll host a series of interactive workshops in October. One will be focused on youth. One will be focused on households slash more general interest. And the last one will be focused on small businesses. So through those, we'll take an even deeper dive into potential mitigation actions and hear some feedback from folks about what's preventing them from taking action, how the city can help and so on. So that wraps up our presentation. I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. For presenters. That's Brooks.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And I had a preview of this presentation and I'm still keep learning every time I read any of these pieces. And it's been also a pleasure to read the other report that I wrote a couple of articles for the Tuolumne Life Utilizing, which was very dense as well. I'm curious, when you talked about the difference between PGE and Bonneville, could you explain a little bit more about what you meant by that? I'm curious. I think there's a conception that it's real efficient and I think it's surprising to people.
So Bonneville power, we all assume is everybody's power. But it's actually given first rights to local utility districts all over the Pacific Northwest. So Eugene Water and Electric Board is the largest Oregon public utility that receives what's called a slice of Bonneville's power. So virtually every small PUD in the state has access to that hydropower, which while not being renewable, is extremely low-carbon. So it kind of gives communities that have a public utility a cleaner baseline to start with. So PGE doesn't have a guaranteed title to 80% hydro. So they have to buy it from a number of sources, some of which they're generating, some of which they're just buying. So they've been moving to get more and more renewables in their portfolio. And they've been very responsive, at least to our other community clients and customers, when they've been eager to get more renewables than is mandated by the state. So when you have an investor-owned utility, you have more room to request change and probably more reason to request change. But fortunately, PGE's been a great partner to many other communities when they've said, can we go faster than the law is requiring? Is that helpful? Does that get at it?
Yes, that definitely gets at it. And then my other question is, you went through pretty quickly things we can do. And I'm just curious, is there going to be like a specific report with some real brass tacks kind of stuff about, you know, building efficiencies and different kinds of ways that we can incorporate that and also use them around suggestions around carbon exchanges if we have to go that direction based on policy needs that we're looking at?
We don't have offsets in our scope of work, but it's certainly something we could look at instead of something else. But it is a question for everybody. Everybody wants to know kind of where is that appropriate? I think when we're looking at gas, gas use, and it won't be an easy transition and there are places where we know we need gas for now, I think that's a great place to look for offsets. And then on kind of that bigger picture question of how detailed are we going to get in here? It really is subject to what the folks from the community share and then what those folks are that work at PGE, that work at Energy Trust of Oregon, that, you know, work for all the different groups that are on this topic to say, how can we do it better in this community? So they might say, you guys have a huge gap in low-income service when it comes to energy or something like that. And then you'd say, okay, that's where the city's going to have to act, right? Or where the city may want to act. But we do have service providers that we're going to be talking to that do everything that we're needing to do. The question is, how can we lend a hand? Or how can we get their attention? Or how can we get their investments? Or what can we do to make sure that we're keeping up on those things? So there's a program for all of it. There's just, it's not coming fast enough. And then there's never enough money is the other thing. So it's really about where do we prioritize and what do we want to support?
Thank you very much.
And a few, my first one, it's so embarrassing how much the US consumes compared to the rest of the world. So I was wondering if you had a comparison to develop, other developed countries, how we rate, because that was pretty awful.
Yeah, this is off the top of my head, so no quotes on this. So India averages about a metric ton per person. And realize that there's some parts of India are super-developed, other parts aren't. Most of Western Europe, if we're hovering around 25 metric tons per person, all in, imported and local, they're hovering around 18 to 17. A lot of that is just on the de facto density of their environments because those cities were built so long ago that they're dense. And I'd say China is one of those ones that changed over 20 years from one metric ton per person to five because they are industrializing. And the ones that have bigger per-person carbon footprints than us are Australia, Abu Dhabi and Saudi Arabia, and I think Qatar.
Then I was wondering if you could more clearly define what renewable natural gases? Are we talking cows from Timbuktu, methane gas?
Yeah, so renewable, so the definition of renewable is different in electricity than it is in fuels. So in fuels, renewable generally means bio or zero GHG. So renewable natural gas is usually bio. But renewable hydrogen, which would be made from renewable energy, would be a good gas that's not bio. So renewable natural gas mostly would come from cow, mostly from dairy lagoons and from wastewater treatment plants and from landfills. And then after that, methane's hard to get in large quantities. You can make it, you can capture parts of it and you can do chemical reactions to make, you know, RNG that gets more complicated. But there's a limited supply. And it's mostly from dairies and from wastewater treatment plants and landfills. So we want to use that, but we probably won't get to where we want to get to. So we're probably going to need offsets for that. So we want all of that gas to be used, but there's not enough for everybody. So we're going to have to buy offsets. But eventually, if we're burning gas, it's going to be hydrogen because we can figure out a way to make hydrogen by running, let's say, solar power electricity through water. You make the hydrogen and the oxygen. And then you can combust the hydrogen and you get a mix of oxygen and water as byproducts. So hydrogen is end game for combustion for thermal loads, either in big trucks that go far or in industry long-term. But near-term biogas is a great short-term answer.
And my last question has to do with your modeling. And I'm wondering, when you, you know, you have those downhill slides of everything and like, let's pick specifically on EVs. Do you somehow factor in there the cost of putting in the charging stations and, you know, delivering those here and installing them? And, you know, there's a carbon cost to that. So is that modeled into what you've done?
It would be as, as the community is measured today, that's in the consumption portion, which is mostly imported goods. It's all in though, it's everything wrapped in. However, when you look at, you know, new vehicles or power generation, you can look at the emissions in making the thing and then you can look at the emissions on the thing. And one of the easy ways to look at that is building a bridge which has concrete that has emissions in it versus the vehicles that drive on it, right? And turns out, the vehicles are a much bigger thing than what's in the concrete. When it comes to vehicles, the general rule of thumb is, let's say, a vehicle burning fuel over its entire life of 18 years or 12 years, depending on how frugal you are, how long you hold on to cars, that's a 10, let's just give that 10 units. Typically, three of those build the car and seven of those are the fuel. When you have an EV and charging, you have a four, but you don't have the other seven and you don't have the other six. You have something there. But electricity, even brown electricity through an EV is much better than burning regular fuel. So coal-plowered plant running an EV is still like getting 34 miles per gallon in pollution. And our average car in the US is about 24 miles per gallon. So even in the worst-case scenario, you're better off. But when you start talking like solar, then it's like you can drive 5,000 miles for the same amount of pollution. It just starts being more about what you're burning or not burning. Is that helpful?
It's very helpful. And I wanted to thank you for your presentation and explaining things in a way that was understandable.
I'm glad you understood. It's weird stuff. Please, if you don't understand it, please keep asking. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that because I, there are several things I need explanation. So, so please bear with me as I ask these questions that might seem very nervous. So when, when you say waste at home, like food that's wasted at home, could you explain to me what that means?
Okay, so it's literally, it's not the banana peel. It goes into the compost bin. It would be the banana that you let get brown to the point where you're not eating it anymore. And then also, you're not fooling anybody. If you have 35 brown bananas and you keep saying you're going to make banana bread, but at some point, half the freezer's bananas, right? So the key is not to save the banana peel. The key is, did I get enough bananas that we eat them all, but not so many that one sits on the counter and goes bad?
Rationalize then.
Yes, and it's really, it's really meat and dairy that's the worst of the worst. But people don't tend to waste those because they're more expensive. So the weird thing is you see a lot of waste around like bread and fresh produce.
Interesting, thank you.
So avoiding wasted food is different than, you know, the banana peel or whatever, the core.
It's very good, thank you very much. Because I think of myself as, you know, when I go to the store, what? I'm only a family of two, so I think of what I need to buy. And also, the other question I have, you said there was an offset. When you, when you mean offset something, what, can you give me an example of what that means?
Sure, sure. Let's say, let's say every time you're getting in an airplane, there's two units of greenhouse gases that go out, right? You could pay 10 bucks or 20 bucks to somebody else who's going to take that money and go do a project that's going to remove that amount. So originally, the way that that happened was people would grow a forest or protect a forest that otherwise would have been cut or wouldn't have been grown. And that would take some of the emissions out. The new ways of doing it, more than anything, is technical solutions. So for example, the credits you might buy might be somebody capturing the gas that used to just go out of a landfill right into the sky and now they're generating electricity with it. So in other words, for the amount of pollution that came from whatever your activity is, you can pay somebody else to remove that exact same amount someplace else.
Oh, okay, got it, thank you. The other question, when you say electricity, things will become more electrical. Does that mean that electricity will go up for consumers? So people are paying, you know, we pay PGE or whatever electricity that, whatever power that we have, would that go up as well?
In price?
Because, you know, it seems like that's going up more and more in the, with inflation. Uh huh, because you know, it seems like that's going up, uh, more and more in the, with inflation lately. So I'm wondering if things become more electrical, that means we're going to pay more in electricity.
So, so typically on an energy unit basis, so let's say what's called, uh, a BTU, which is measuring the heat, or a kilowatt hour, which is measuring the electricity. Uh, typically, electricity is about 10% of the cost of transportation energy. Uh, typically. And in the Pacific Northwest, it tends to be even cheaper than the national average. Uh, so we have the, the best conditions for that, but we are going to need to generate a lot more power as a nation. Uh, and as each utility and as it, each region, more electricity to take up that, that energy that we use, uh, or we get from fuel now. Also, fuel prices tend to be a lot more volatile than electricity prices. Electricity contracts are written on 15 and 20 year basis, whereas fuel can be sold on a daily basis. And so the, the pricing is a lot more stable. So I have a graph on my phone, which I wish I could show you, uh, that shows the price of electricity goes like this over time. Whereas the price of fuel goes like this. So, so I believe it will be cheaper, but we actually need to generate a lot more electricity to deal with the eventual consumption that we'll have for all of our vehicles.
Right, okay. So as far as, uh, maybe that's my, that's my final question. So as far as mitigation, um, I, I really like your, your ideas of how we can, um, reduce the waste. And, um, one of the things that I was thinking is the, um, and this is for, I think, phase two, when, when you, you all go into the community and start gathering more information. Sorry, this might be for the, for the staff here.
It's fine.
Um, I would say that, uh, some of the things that we need to consider would be weather. Because, um, if you're like the first mile, second mile, right? And I'm thinking mothers that have children or, you know, like walking in the rain here, especially here that starts getting dark around four o'clock. I mean, the Pacific Northwest is not so much as like California, that's sunny and you have sun all day long. But it, it is, it gets rough here. And coming from another state, it does get a little hard going outside when it's raining. Um, it rains about eight months out of the year. So that's kind of tough for families that might have a couple of children or, or more that are going to the store uh, for that last mile and extra miles, or the first or last mile. So I think that considering that would be very helpful for those families that are, uh, might be struggling within our communities as we build. So I think that we, I think we, we need to consider that. Um, and also, um, I know you mentioned that some of the feedback you've got were from people that have, uh, a more economic status, better economic status. I think we consider those that don't have as well. Because, um, they are the ones that are going to, I mean, someone that has the funds to buy an electric vehicle versus someone that might not have that. I think that will be very, have that, those, those things in mind. Um, and then, um, yeah, I just, those are just kind of the things that I had, and I wrote down that I, I needed clarification. It just a few things of moving forward to phase two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do have one, one thing on, uh, fuel costs. Typically, an EV saves you $1,000 a year in fuel. Like what you pay for electricity versus fuel. And then, of course, it matters what kind of car you have. But, um, the tax incentives or the credits, sorry, on used EVs are there for lower income only in the state? And there's actual credits for buying a used EV. But eventually, not every new car is a $100,000 Tesla, right? Right now, the, the most popular selling call, car in all of California is the Tesla Model 3, which is about 30,000 pre-incentives. Not saying that that's cheap, but I just want to say there is a massive transition going on here.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Uh, just a comment for, uh, Nick and Patty on your last slide about the internet. The interactive workshops for households, you, the small businesses. Do you give it that, uh, when you get those on the counter, give us a heads up? I'm getting emails all the time of folks who want to be involved to be able to answer those.
Yeah.
What to look for, what age, where to sign up.
Absolutely.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of good questions. I appreciate it. That was good.
All right, that brings us to our second item of work session, uh, Bassell Creek Park Property Maintenance Operations Agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Rich Mueller, Parks Planning and Development Manager. And we'd like to share with you in just a minute here. No, no problem.
We need a dad.
Dad joke perhaps? Need a dad joke.
Go home and get one for you.
Oh, lovely. Yeah, we've got it.
We'd like to share with you, um, our department's practice and information about a maintenance and operations agreement. And we use maintenance and operation agreements right now at Brown's Ferry Park and then over at the city property off Hazelbrook Road, the Riverkeeper House area. Okay, I'm not able to advance. Okay. August 22nd, council approved the purchase of just under eight acres of property, land in Bassell Creek area. Uh, you can see Horizons High School and church. And this property is directly across the street from several hundred single and multifamily dwelling units that, that in the future, um, are expected to be built. And then directly across the street from the Affordable Housing Complex. Um, it's 7.7 acres with building structures. There we go. Uh, the purpose of the maintenance and operations agreement is to save the city resources by shifting that maintenance responsibility to, um, another party, to a provider. And to really preserve the value of the land and structures by, um, maintaining it in as is condition. Um, again, Metro is contributing to the funding of this, uh, acquisition through the Local Share Bond Program. And this agreement would be consistent, um, with our intergovernmental agreement with Metro. The provider, uh, would be the current owners. Again, to keep the land and structures in good condition. Uh, we're looking at, and, and again, this actually, we're providing you information here. The actual agreement will return at another time for your consideration. Uh, the term of the agreement would be one year with an additional year, um, renewal. And the benefit would be, we're not mowing, we're not maintaining both the structure and the land. The, the, besides that, it's really the, the safety and security, uh, reduce vandalism, have somebody occupy the residence, um, and provide the safety and security that we would expect in, in city parkland. The property is about 1.7 acres and there's a number of structures, which total approximately 5,000, or yeah, 5,000 square feet. The public benefit includes main, getting the property maintained, having an onsite caretaker. Um, the insurance would be for, like a renter's insurance for the contents and, and possibly liability on some areas of the property. Repairs, the upkeep, safety. We talked about the security and vandalism that vacant structures tended to attract. And then, um, the landscape and natural area maintenance and building systems and appliance, appliances upkeep. This, this kind of just puts in perspective, this was from the Bassell Creek Plan. You can see the trail plan. This shows the property location, um, and the next steps. We would look at bringing the agreement back to you. We expect sometime in October. And then after that, uh, complete the property transaction, close escrow. That, um, we're looking at later in October, the first part of November. And then to plan the site, but the residents aren't there to plan the site that, that it was served. And one of Metro's, um, stipulations on the, on the bond funding is that we involve residents in the area specifically the CFA, the, the Affordable Housing Complex and residents. Um, and then after the residents, current and future, both residential and employment plan, this facility, we would be into park design, which construction would follow. There we go. So that's just a brief overview of, of, uh, a maintenance and operations agreement. Again, it seems to be the standard, we're using it in other locations. And I will be happy to answer any questions, although if they're difficult questions, I would ask Ross to join me.
I'm trying to understand this fully. So the, the, the people that the city's buying the property from would live on that property for two years. Would they be paid anything or just have the opportunity to live there?
No, they, they wouldn't be compensated. Um, they would live in the structure. They would have certain responsibilities that are laid out in the agreements, such as paying utilities, things like that. And, um, it, it's a situation that we get a good public benefit. And, um, you know, they, they also get some benefit while they're looking at relocating and, and finding, where, where they're going to end up, land and, and a home.
Well, to me, just because I've dealt with commercial properties, I know that if you have an empty building, you're just asking for tagging and everything else. I think, oh, sorry, can't hear me. Anyway, I think it sounds like a win-win situation.
Uh, thanks for the, the preview of what, what's to come. Um, I just wanted to comment, uh, I don't really have a question, but I was fortunate to go over there when I was working on some stuff for the Twelton Sustainability Network around, um, getting rid of invasives and planting pollinators and have the opportunity to meet the, the residents there that sold the property. And they're just, um, extremely delightful, positive, welcoming people. So I, I just wanted to give them a character reference since we're talking about it. Because, um, they were, I don't think I'll forget meeting him for the first time. They're just, um, extremely delightful in a unusually, um, uh, notable way. So I just think that as far as having people that will be good partners in this, that's a person that, um, you know, is, is different than some of the other people that we've run into around landies in the past, so.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Yeah.
The, the property and the structures are in good condition. And this would, this agreement would not preclude us going in and doing restoration work or plantings or other things that, that we, we, we would do in other park areas.
And I love just how excited they are that it's going to be parklands and that it's going to be part of Twelton and that they're just on board with the whole big mission of the thing. Um, it's not just like hanging out for a minute while they figure out where they're going to live. They're really dedicated to the whole idea, so I throw it out there. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so we're up to our Council meeting agenda review. Uh, first thing, I think, Council President Ryan is up for the pledge of allegiance. And we've got a couple of proclamations. I know Council Reyes is Spanish, Spanish and English. Yes. And then who would like to do the emergency preparedness? Council President.
I better find it on my screen.
All right, and we have a group introduction. Proclamation there. Any questions on the percentage agenda?
I don't know if I bring this up now, but I'm planning on, um, making a motion around the minutes, just a small change.
We'll go ahead and do the, we've got about 20 minutes for the Council table. So also, Council.
Hey, thank you. Um, the things that I've attended, I think other people have and I'll probably report on them. But I would like to, um, share, because the mayor pointed out that last, uh, council session, I neglected to share, that there is an opportunity for all of you who may have experienced um, or not experienced and just have extra things at your house, the COVID-10 that are looking to get rid of clothes, uh, that would be appropriate for any high school student for, um, homecoming, winter formal or prom. We are collecting those. We're having a big giveaway event in the community on Saturday. But if you have items that you're calling out, please feel free to bring them between now and Thursday to Riverview Community Bank or, um, Orange Theory. Where suits, ties, socks, dresses, purses, jewelry, press on nails, you name it. So if you need any information, uh, reach out to me at chillier@twelton.gov. Thanks.
Oh, boy. Um, well, one thing I know, um, Council Hillier was at, you were at, was the CC, the Clackamas County Business Alliance Happy Hour, which we're all there not very long, but it was nice to get out. Um, then, um, on the eighth, oh, I went to the Chamber Key Leaders Breakfast. So same people and a few extras were there. And it was about, um, Commissioner Savis and Commissioner Rogers were talking about tolling plans for I-205. And I'm hopeful that at least one more punch at the ODOT people will help. I'm not sure it will. Yeah. And then, um, um, we had our first, um, meeting for in quite a while with the Clackamas County Climate Action Committee. They did public outreach and gave us their input on that. And, um, the thing that the public, they heard, um, they have concerns like with the EVs and the cost of affording that and the charging. And then, um, a lot of people just wanted education about what they could do and how they, you know, can do things better. Then, um, the ninth, went to the Historical Society fundraiser, which was near Franklin's there. And it was really fun. And any event where you could have a harp and a cowboy poet and make it work, it's great. That's it.
Um, thank you. Yeah, I just, um, I was, uh, again, with fellow counselors, um, Pratt and Brooks. We interview, uh, committee members, uh, to assign community, committee, uh, committee members to the council, to our community committees that we have here in Twelton. So, uh, it's always a fun thing to do. Um, we always comment on this, but I cannot believe, I just, for me, it's really fulfilling to, uh, know that a lot of people are interested in, in volunteering and giving their time to this, to, to their own community. to know that a lot of people are interested in, in volunteering and giving their time to this, to their own community. And sometimes we don't have a spot for everyone, but it's just really great to, to know that there are, there's a lot of interest out there from, from our members, from our community in Twelton. So we interview for the Twelton Library, which is a beloved place or beloved community to be a part of. We did the planning, planning, and then, gosh, I'm missing the other one that we. PRs, right?
ARB, Architectural Review.
That one. Yeah, that was, that's always a very, you get a few of those a year. But yeah, it was a really, just always a great opportunity to meet people and talk about the city. And they, they just wonderful people that want to be a part of these committees.
I haven't had any formal committee meetings the last couple of weeks. But we have been, I have been, and a few people up here also, working really hard for the Twelton Parks Bond Project. So I just want to say a couple of things. We do have a, a committee that is, is working towards this, this goal. And I just want to say that I appreciate everybody's help that has been working on that. And I think I'll save my rest of my comments for our communications later within our formal meeting.
The 22nd. So on the 23rd, I participated with Wanneta Pool Center in the Twelton Riverkeepers on the Sunset Kayak Tour. This was a really wonderful experience. Being on the river, learning a lot about the river, the history and spending time with the Twelton Riverkeeper volunteers who are so really helpful. And a lot of us aren't very, like, I'm not a very experienced kayaker. I'm more experienced now. And it didn't take that long because they're so helpful and have so much information. So I just wanted to say what a great trip that was. And people look at the Wanneta Pool stuff. I think sometimes people think it's just like some knitting circles or something. And there's some really, really great things that are happening over there. So I encourage people to join me. I met with Mayor Gamba and Council Rosenthal more about just the conversation we had had around the parking concerns with the land use and exploring what that meant. The, the piece in the rules that talks about Metro doing exchanges and learning more about that. And just really want to invite people to, I don't have anything in writing today. It's a lot to work on suddenly, but I do want people, invite people to think about the fact that we have a climate action plan and we have pieces that we can pull ourselves that we're really positioned to do, that we can not only help solve this problem with some creativity in my mind instead of being litigious and, and generosity too with our neighboring cities that might not have climate action plans and help with some of these carbon exchange ideas for parking. It's very viable and realistic from the conversations I had. The had an interesting, another interesting meeting, but I don't know if it's quite or this. A lot of things endorsement interviews. Met with Linda about the climate action plan and suggested that she get involved here as well. And I'm working on articles. You'll see, see what else. Oh, another thing I did with the Wanneta Pool Center again was go apple picking. And that was another really great thing. I have all these apples in my house at this point. And I've been also working with the League of Oregon Cities Women's Caucus under, I'm on the committee for the candidates that are going to come for the next session and appointing candidates. Also is at the Key Leaders Breakfast. My favorite question was from Council Pratt. So I think that there was a lot of really interesting things going on in the room. And I felt fortunate to sit by a lot of people from our school district, especially the community liaison with the students. I had an endorsement conversation with the student union as well as several different students have reached out to me from these different climate action plans or different climate action groups. And I think it's really interesting how many groups there are at the school of different ways that kids are concerned and being active around their concerns around climate. I also started doing the Tai Chi here. So I just, I think I'm really into the, the pole center stuff right now and encourage people to come and join me with that. I have some quarterly meetings coming up this week. So I'll have more on the Regional Water Providers Consortium as well as the Policy Advisory Board next time. Thanks.
I haven't had any committee meetings since our last city council meeting.
Quite a few. Attended the first regional tolling advisory committee meeting back on August 24th. This is a group of folks who are going to advise OTC on tolling policy in the region. We're gonna be meeting for about a year or so, every month for the next year or so. I want to thank Clackamas County Commissioner Savis, who was very vocal to me, and I was vocal to meeting. I was surprised how vocal all the county and Portland were, as well as Metro President Peterson about some issues we have with the charter that was presented, basically our bylaws. Most of us thought it was stented in favor of ODOTs. We want that changed. And the ability to discuss topics that we want to discuss versus what ODOT wants discussed over the next year. And also the feedback on how things were recommended to the OTC. So that's TBD, their meeting on the 26th. I will be out of town, so Mayor Snyder from Tigers may alternate. So he'll represent Marsha County Cities at that meeting. On the 25th, the Gray Portland Inc. Small Cities Consortium had a presentation on the results of the CHIP task force that was, you know, headed by Senator Wyden and our governor and a whole bunch of folks. It's a huge committee. The CHIPS Act did pass. So it was how to get Oregon ready to maybe lure another big chip facility here in the area. I asked the question why they had to be the Portland metro area, why not Springfield Eugene? And I said, there is land there also. Why is it always so focused here? Because we got the UGB challenge. And the answer was because transportation, transportation here is better. So that's why, you know, if we're gonna get another big plant around here, it will be in the Portland metro area. We just have to adjust. You've seen in the papers, I assume Governor Brown is reacting to the CHIP and trying to make, you know, the beginnings of some land use changes, put some money into doing the luring of another big facility here in the Portland metro area. On the eighth, I also attended the tolling breakfast. I was fortunate to be sat between Commissioner Savis again, you and I are gonna be attending a lot of meetings together. And Representative Prusak, Representative Wright, so a lot of folks know that Representative Prusak is no friend of tolling, no friend of ODOT, and she anticipates, you know, before her term ends, she'll be talking a lot to ODOT about the tolling program. What I like about that is, you know, her as representative has the most juice of anybody. The legislature is which private train with tolling. It's not Metro, it's not ODOT, it's the legislature. So she can convince her fellow legislators to change some of the rules, change things up. ODOT will take their lead from legislature. So we'll see what happens there. The Historical, the Historical Society auction was very cool, Council Pratt. What I enjoyed was seeing former Councilor Calab was there and Mayor Ogden. I haven't seen Mayor Ogden in person in about two and a half years. And he was there and he's looking good. He's quite the chatty guy and hearing that he's doing well. I'm also psyched that, you know, lunch slash dinner with the mayor went for $275. And Mike Hannigan butt. And then on the 10th, I went to the Stafford Hamill Family Fest. That was a lot of fun. I got to meet up with a former mayor, Russ Axelrod, West Lynn. He is on the board of the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area. They're working on, you know, working with the PGE, the Grand Ron, West Lynn area around the river and rebuilding it and bringing back the history. I also met their Britta Mansfield, who is now the Executive Director. Jody Carson is a former West Lynn councillor. And they spoke highly of our own Yvonne Addington, who's on their advisory board. They gave me a heads up that they will be approaching Sherlin, giving a presentation because they'd like to get Twelton more involved on the Willamette Falls Landing project and let, let us know what's going on. Because Yvonne's always there telling about Twelton. We know that. At the Washington County Corning Committee today, we had, I scheduled out the M-stiff outreach results, which was no surprise, you know, with the top three were. What I was surprised with was the Eady Road project and our Herman Road project. We're, you know, down in the last fourth and fifth. I think that's mainly because people are not aware of it. Especially in E1, because that is in Sherwood and Sherwood was kind of upset that they didn't really have a public involvement and effort in Sherwood. So they think they might have done better on any road. And remember, that's where I think the two teenage girls were killed. So there, that's a big project for them. So that's one of their top projects. So this, I asked for the written comments from Washington County. They're gonna publish that here by October. So that will have the comments about what people were saying about the Moonstary project, the Twelton Sherwood project and the bridge project. We also talked about STIF, which is statewide transportation improvement funding. The, they're looking at maybe having a shuttle run into Salt Creek, so expanding the ride connection shuttle that would go all the way down to Salt Creek down towards Wilsonville. But they're saying that's about two years away. And I said, well, development's not two years away. It's starting already. So we might need to look at that again. They said they would based on development. The new Bridgeport to Portland Road is gonna be called the Green Route. And it's gonna start this fall. They've got drivers and they've got buses. So we're looking forward to that. Right before this meeting, I had the Asian Task Force. And then I just want to mention this reminder that buying to wine is this Sunday from seven to 10 at the Twelton Library. Tickets are $50. It should be a fun event. And finally, I will not be here on the 26th or next meeting. So Council President Grant, you'll be in charge. All right. Anything else? All right, with that, we have about five minutes for a bio break. We'll go ahead and recess and work session and come back at seven o'clock.